Council to order. Beau, before we do a moment of silence, you have a quick update on Officer McClellan?
Yes. Yesterday, he was three hours without the ventilator. He was sitting up in his chair. He still has a trach and he's using a trach to cough through. But he was three hours yesterday without the ventilator. I went visiting him on Wednesday. So he's progressing.
It's great news.
Wonderful news. Okay, I'll ask that you stand and join me in a moment of silence. And again, please keep Officer McClellan in your thoughts. Councilman Vickers, will you lead us in our pledge of allegiance to the flag?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Danielle, if you will call the roll.
Mr. Vickers?
Here.
Ms. Lillard?
Here.
Mr. Sharrow?
Here.
Mr. Pettit?
Here.
Mr. Sowers?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Okay, do we have any additions to or deletions from the agenda? All right, hearing none. Hopefully, for the last time, the continuity in the government of LuRay. This meeting of the Town Council is being held pursuant to the April 13th, 2020 ordinance for continuity in the government of LuRay. The town clerks shall read the names of the council members present and identify those who are electronically present. The town manager is responsible for receiving public comment in advance of the meeting, which may be submitted by mail, email, phone, or hand delivery by 5:00 p.m. on the date of the meeting. In-person attendance and comment by the public is also permitted, subject to the limitations of the most recent executive order and phasing guidelines issued by Governor Northam. This meeting can be viewed live on the town's Facebook page, and a recording will be available on the town's YouTube channel. Minutes from the meeting will be posted on the town's website after being approved by the Town Council. All right, consent agenda. I need a motion for the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the filing consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the regular council meeting on the 5/10/2021, the minutes of the work session on 5/25/2021, the financial statement ending 5/31/2021, and accounts payable totaling $292,594.49.
Seconded. Danielle?
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Okay, do we have any citizen comments other than the public hearing? Okay, we'll move on. LuRay Downtown Initiative, Ms. Elliott?
Good evening.
Evening.
It's nice to see all of your lovely faces.
Thank you.
You know, I'm kind of like, gosh, I forgot they were really that handsome. And of course, Stephanie's beautiful.
She must want money or something.
I always want money, though. Don't make no mistake about it, darling. I will Oliver Twist all day long. Just a couple of quick things. The Creekside Commons, as you all know, is coming along beautifully. I mean, we are getting close to the deadline now. I think the last major component will be the bling frame, and I believe that's in the process. I know that there's going to be landscaping worked on this week and some things like that, so, and hearing nothing but positive about it. Our citizens and our merchants, everybody is just really stoked about it. So I think it's a great addition. The downtown get-down is coming along. I'm working with Jen and Morgan on that, and it looks like that's going to be really good this year for the 4th. We're expecting a large turnout. It's my understanding everything is booked for the 4th of July in Page County, after checking. We're still, as you all know, Ollie Cat is now open, and we're working on the downtown brochure, getting that ready to go to print with the changes and additions and deletions for that, so that'll soon be ready to come out. And other than that, Lady Had Evenings on Main on June 4th had a great turnout. We have one this Friday. I hope everybody can come out. And other than that, thank you.
May I ask a question about the get-down? That replace Mayfest, right?
Yes, well, yeah.
Or sorta?
Sorta. Kind of sorta.
So is the live music at night all through the day?
Yes, throughout the day. Of course, our thing is come early, stay late, shop downtown, dine downtown. The art warehouse is going to have some... No, there's not going to be vendors or craft show, anything like that. And that will take place starting at 5:00. From 5:00 to 9:00, the downtown get-down that the town is doing will start then. There's going to be food trucks, and there's going to be bands at Roughness Plaza. There will be bands down at the Chano Valley Electric Co-op down there. There's going to be lots of inflatables and things of that nature for the kids to do. So a lot of family fun, entertainment, and of course, food trucks are going to be at Chano Valley Electric Co-op and also down on Roughness Plaza.
Got it.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Thanks.
Jackie, before you leave, I'd like to mention one thing. I'd like to recognize Mr. Bill Huffman for his years of service with LDI. I understand stepping down from the president's position, but I know we had his arm twisted for years to even continue beyond his term.
It's a rumor. It's a rumor. I'm not letting him leave.
Did someone not slip him a check or something?
We'll talk after.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thank you. It's been a pleasure to be the president of LDI and shepherd that thing forward, and I hope they continue to send that message.
Thank you, Bill. We appreciate it. Thank you so much. All right, Arise of Page County, Mr. Joe Fudge.
Good evening. I came here tonight to talk to you about Arise and what we do and why we need your help. We were asking for some of the money that the American Rescue Act provides. I sent a letter to the Town Council. I hope everyone received it. Yes, no? Well, in that case, let me read it. It says, it's dated April 13th. Arise of Page County would like to request funds for the American Rescue Act, funding 2021 from the town of LuRay's allocation amount, and what we're asking for is $25,000. This funding will be used inside Page County to support the mission of Arise, providing housing, food, and other life-saving needs to the area's poor. We at Arise feel the poor and the COVID-affected people of Page County can directly benefit from the American Rescue Act allocation. All of the staff and management at Arise are all volunteers. We're all over 65, and we work quite diligently trying to help the folks around town that are literally doing without for many different reasons. If requested, to continue the document, we will submit a full disclosure of how the money is spent back to the Town Council. We believe that the money that we can get, we can directly put into area businesses to help support this important mission. Now, your question might be, how? Well, area motels, their occupancy goes up and down, and we have connections with different motels, and they want our business. But it is expensive. We try to put people up for anywhere from a day or two to a month, and there are a lot of foreclosures going around in the community, and unfortunately, we are the beneficiary of that. They come to us and they say, help me. Well, we are out of money at Arise. We still have enough money to literally continue business, but we have no money to help people in this dire need. We still cook food. We still make sure that people get hot meals, and we spend, well, all of our waking hours trying to figure out different ways to come up with money to help these folks. Now, we're beginning to see families. Families put out on the street, sometimes by losing their jobs, sometimes by other reasons, but nevertheless, they go out on the street, and we get a call, and so does Lois. I don't know how to describe this, but I, here's what we do do. We go into action. We try to find jobs for them. We spend a huge amount of time getting documents for them, like driver's license, birth certificates, things that they may have lost in moving. So we spend our hours making sure that these folks can get some of the basics that they need to progress on. I'm from Williamsburg originally. We moved here three years ago, and as you all know, tourists in Williamsburg are a big deal. I grew up there, and I literally learned many, many things about tourism. When I went into the College of Women Mary my freshman year, I was still working as a motel auditor, and I literally learned from the business community what it was like to make sure and keep the tourists. Right now, I mean, when you go around town, people can't hire folks. It's because affordable housing is non-existent here, and it's disappearing every day that someone turns a rental house into a sale, and they flip it because they're tired of being short-changed on their rent because people literally are having difficult times. If you talk to any realtors, they'll tell you there's an extreme shortage. Now, there's a row of, a ray of hope, and the 52 units that are going to be built, but that's two years down the road. In order to build back here in LuRay and get the economy going full-time, we need affordable housing, and I don't have answers for that. All I know is it exists, and I'd like to put a spotlight on it for you tonight. Now, the money that we're asking for, I can give you, for instance, we're a 501(c)(3), so all of our books are wide open, if any of you want to see what it's like to see almost 80% loss of revenue for us. It's tough. Churches that support us are literally, people aren't, they're just beginning to go back. So, but this has happened for the past year and a half to us. It's just gotten to a head now. In addition to this, we feel that the money in this act can very well be put to good use in this matter, and I don't think it'll step on anyone's toes. I think it will enhance the community, keep people off the street, hopefully off the street, and hopefully employed. The two families that we're currently feeding that are staying in a local motel, they depend on us, and what I'm saying tonight is, we are depending on you to help us, and I'd like to answer any questions and anyone has.
Joe, thanks for coming. I've enjoyed talking to you the last few months. We've been in contact. Do you have any relationships with long-term rental? I mean, I know you told me once that you really try to, you know, hotel room is kind of a temporary measure, an emergency, and you just mentioned it, but do you see, do you have any relationships with already success finding people, long-term rentals?
I have, but it's usually through guaranteed government funds allocated to... IBR has stepped up and helped us out, and there are folks that are homeless for all kinds of different reasons, and the ones that Lois and I are trying to work with sometimes have traumatic brain injuries that precludes them from working. And the one I refer to now is one of those cases, and we've gotten that person off the street, enters an apartment, we make sure he's fed, and we check on him just about every day. And I just got him a new phone, which is a big deal because, you know, you can, he can stay in touch with us, and we can stay in touch with him. But we have gotten money from Channondale Alliance for housing over in Woodstock, but things are tightening over there as well. They've been a great stopgap, but to get someone in to an apartment, there's a waiting list, and there's a credit check. There's a huge deposit. I was really lucky that IBR helped us out with this one case because if we would have needed all of that, it would have been impossible. Even the town demands a deposit to turn the water and sewer on. That's 150 bucks. That would be great if Town Council would waive that, but as of now, that's not the case. Even if Arise will guarantee it, the town wouldn't do that. So that would be a good thing to bring up in the future if you think it's worthy of consideration, but the hardest thing to do is to find permanent housing. We've had to drive people to Harrisonburg to get them in a shelter there because that's where they needed to go, and there's no shelters on this side of the mountain. And it would be a great thing to have, but unfortunately, that is not in the, in the books for right now. Any other questions?
You know, I'm very grateful and glad that you're helping anybody at all, but I'm curious, are any of the folks that you've been helping, how many of them have been county citizens or perhaps LuRay citizens, probably less so, but county?
Well, I can definitely tell you that over the past six months, all of them have Page County ties. Some of them have literally gone out and gone to other places and came back to their parents, so they are Page County residents, and some of them are from LuRay, but most of them are, you know, from the county. I really don't keep track of that, but it comes up in our intake report, and we try to find out about family ties because it's very important for us to pursue them going back to their families, and by the time they get to us, they have burned every bridge and are worn it out at least.
It does, yeah.
Yeah. Any other point that I could make about that would be that they don't come here for the benefits because there are none, other than a hot food from us. They can guaran, I can guarantee you that. But they know that if they need a shelter, shelter, and they want to stay in a shelter, they go to Harrisonburg, and of course Winchester has a facility up there as well.
Counsel, anybody else?
Well, you're asking for money from the American Rescue Act. We've talked about that. I'm not sure if we know what we can give and how we can give. We don't have all the guidelines yet, the way I understand it. Is that correct?
Well, if you can't give money for the people that are...
I'm not saying in your case. I'm just saying that it's still recent, and we don't, we have until the 2024, I believe, to spend the money that's allotted to the town, but I'm not sure if I know for sure if it's legal for what we can do and what we can't do. That's what, I guess, if there's a holdup, that'd be part of it.
They have, the federal government has established interim guidelines that are being refined as we speak.
Right. I mean, it's still queasy, I guess. So the shelter in Harrisonburg, how big is that one? Is that ever full, or is that one, do we have people that can be sitting there any time?
It's full every night, and at 4:00, they stand in line, and they literally, the last person in line is the last person that they can take.
And then they just shut the door?
They shut the door.
See, my, I guess I'm naive, but how many homeless people do you think we have in the county? I mean, is that an easy thing to answer?
It's an impossible thing to do. Because they literally move in and move out. They, like I was mentioning earlier, they come back to their families here, and that's on the transgene side.
Right.
Now, the homegrown people that stay here and live here is another group altogether. I wish I could give you a figure. I think the state of Virginia has some really good figures on that, but I think that's just guessing. I don't think there's a real figure because it, it happens, it evolves every week.
Boy, my life is kind of invisible. I don't really see tent cities. I don't see people under bridges. I don't...
Well, they, they are out there sometimes, and I think Beau can speak to that. Occasionally, he has to move people on. If people lose their housing and they take their families and they sleep in a car, they're guilty of child abuse with their children in there. The children are taken away, and the parents are thrown in jail. That is the law. And, you know, I think, I think Beau takes a different tact to that. I don't think he's that cut and dry, but there are a lot of people out there that are. State policemen are required to. So just think about that for a second. You lose your house, your house burns down, you don't have money to spend. You take your kids and say, well, we're going to spend the night in the car tonight, and boom, you're in big trouble. Your kids get taken away. You're literally in jail for child abuse. And it does happen. It does happen. I would like to excuse myself if you've, if I've answered all your questions because somehow Page One was neglected off the agenda for tonight, and Lois is here to say something similar. Lois, is that okay?
Okay. Okay with that. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting me to be here with you tonight to tell what we do at Page One. We have not shut down our operation at all through the COVID. We worked every single day, thankful to our wonderful volunteers that stayed on board. We took the safety protocols and kept the door open. We did see a lot of people during that time because times were so uncertain. They didn't know if they were going to need food, rent money, electric, whatever, and that's what we do. We do food three days a week, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, 8:30 to 11:30, to assist with the needs. We do rent, water, fuel, and electric, and also we have a fund that we started about five years ago for our cancer patients. They go five days a week, and they need funding for gas. Through the COVID, we saw a lot of changes, as well as everybody else. The need became great, especially, like Joe said, with housing. A lot of people were evicted before that. We're seeing a lot of people now. I had three today being evicted. A lot of landlords have sold their property, you know, they just decided, I'm getting out, and some of them, we just had to turn away. We cannot afford the motel lodging. I have a little lady that has been motel lodging for about three years. She gets $790, and her rent's $650 motel lodging. So it is very, very difficult to decide which way to go with a lot of families, a lot of individuals coming through the door. We're able to help anyone with food. We never turn anyone away. We have a lot of hikers that come through, homeless people, you know, ran out of money. I just need some food and some personal care items. But far as the housing, we are really, really struggling for families. I had a fire this week, and families in motel lodging with Salvation Army for $500. We're able to help with a couple hundred dollars. Then where do you go with that, you know, after that? A lot of these people are local people. These are our town citizens. These are our county residents that are there for assistance. We lost all of our fundraising through the COVID, and I'm not saying that was good, but we were full force at the shop with food and financial assistance and donations. People had time to clean out, and that was a blessing in one way, but we were so short of help. We lost our male inmates. We lost our female inmates, so we worked a lot of hours just trying to keep the operation running, getting things in and out. Our shops were closed down, some 12 weeks, some longer than that. We got back into operation. We opened the doors up to people and got things rolling. Our sales has been good. I've been cleaning out estates in Northern Virginia, Alexander, going to Flint Hill next week to bring in that extra revenue for our shops. Nice, quality stuff that is given to us free, and we bring it back here to put into our community, to help our residents. And that has been a blessing because through the COVID, there was lack of funding. After things kind of stabilized, a lot of our donors came in with their stimulus checks, donated their whole checks to keep people in need here in our community. So we have been blessed in a lot of ways, but we have a lot of need. I was raised here. I know what it's like to see people that's without water, without bathrooms, that have black paper, plastic paper over their windows. They're burning pallets to keep warm. You know, we live in a beautiful area. A lady came through today, and she said, I couldn't figure out what this was, and said, it said, food bank said, I thought I'd stop. So she came in, she toured the facility. She said, this is wonderful. She said, the air is different here. I live in Richmond. Said, it's just such a wonderful place. It is a wonderful place, but we have need, and the need is growing. We're seeing the re-entry of a lot of inmates back into our society, and I'm happy that we have career support specialists in our offices right now. She has put three of them at the Emco plant here in LuRay. They're doing great. I have four females that will be going to the Wrangler plant here soon. We're getting them ready. I'm cracking the whip every day and saying, this is your schedule, this is your lunch break, this is your break, and getting them ready. You know, they're all local. They're young mothers, 18 up to 30, wonderful males, talented, made the wrong choice in their life, but we work with them. We try to get them back out into the side, get a normal life, and that's what we do. I have put in a request also, $25,000, and as you can look at my reports that I turned in, it takes a lot of money with the rent, the electric, and we take advantage of every program that is offered. There's a lot of people that can't fill out the forms. We do. We do Medicaid. We do the cooling program, which starts tomorrow. We're going to sign these people up to help on their electric bill. The allotment has been cut this year from $796 to 400. You know, it's going right directly to the power company so we know it'll be put to good use. The fuel will be going up this year. We had notice, you know, we have to order a certain number of gallons to even get it delivered. We have more and more people wanting wood, trying to stay warm, so we're trying to prepare ourselves. As you can see, our fundraisers have started. We had our first year celebration, grand opening celebration at our boutique a couple weeks ago. Did well. We have a fashion show coming up June 26th. So we're thinking of all, always, all the time, of thinking of ideas. We've got a shoe drop going on, so if your closet's full, drop them off to us. I got to the end of August, we get paid good, somebody else benefits. That's what we do at Page One every day. I'm proud to be there. Been there 35 years. See the need, know the need, and work with everybody here, trying to help with the need, and we work with all of our agencies. Choices, Arise, Channondale Alliance, Family Promises, you know, that's what it takes, teamwork. My son came, my grandson came to visit me a couple of months ago, and he said, oh, Grandma, let's do it this way. It's got to be teamwork, and that's what it has to be to make it all happen. Any questions?
Thank you, Lois. 35 years is an amazing, amazing feat.
Yeah. It's been an up and down struggle.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lois.
All right, Choices of Page County, Vanessa Kulik, Kulik? Am I saying that right or wrong? Kulik, I'm sorry.
Nice to see both of your faces for the first time. Everything's been zooming in. Hello, I'm Vanessa Kulik. So you got it right the first time. It doesn't happen very often. Thank you, Stephanie, for having me come out here, and it's lovely to meet all you all. Choices needs no introduction. I understand my predecessor, Debbie, was honored here, was that two months ago, recently, and she built quite an organization. Big shoes to fill. I thought I would give a little, some statistics... I thought I would give a little, some statistics about where we're at. I can give a little bit background of who I am and what the next year looks like going forward. So, Page County, when looking across Virginia, is on the higher side of levels of incidences of domestic violence. And it's not, you know, out of this world, but it's higher than average. We don't have great statistics. You know, I've worked with Chief Cook and some of the other chiefs, trying to pull some of the data. What I do have is that we typically each year have 60 clients that come and stay at the shelter. In addition to that, we're providing services between 400 and 500 clients per year. So, that's through hotline calls, court advocacy, housing, and counseling. So, they don't have to be in our shelter in order for us to provide services. So, in the, for the 24 years, a lot of what Choices did before I arrived focused on the shelter, which makes sense. We want it. That's our bread and butter. That service is needed. My background, you know, if you can't tell, I'm not from Page County, but I feel very lucky to live here. I'm from Washington, DC. I was a diplomat at the State Department for over a decade. My master's is in Conflict Analysis and Resolution. I would deploy to conflict zones. I would work on violence prevention, crisis response, but at the Civil War level. So, a little bit of a different context, but a lot of interpersonal conflict. I did gender-based violence. I worked a lot of local community and connected it to the national level strategy. So, when I moved out here, spoke with Debbie, spoke with Barb, some of the other board members, and they were looking to expand their operations to include prevention, which is more of what I'm familiar with. So, in the time I've been here since I came in January, which seems like yesterday, we have been working with the schools, with Eric Benson, and hopefully with the new superintendent to do more social, emotional learning. So, more or less trying to work with the youth to become more resilient. And we're doing everything based on research-based evidence. So, we're using programs that are proven to reduce the likelihood by more than 50% of the youth that go through that program to become perpetrators of domestic violence and to be victims of domestic violence. So, that fact-based evidence programming is really important to me. That was how I was judged on my work for a decade, and so I feel like that's important to bring here. We're also working with 4H. I hope to reach out to the Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, but we really want to focus on the youth and trying to prevent the violence before it happens and continue to work to meet the needs as they are now. I will echo, you know, just to provide a little bit of perspective from our side. You know, we have a housing coordinator who typically maybe three times a year in the past would get calls about homelessness that doesn't necessarily have to do with domestic violence. We've had about three calls per week in the past two months. So, I'm not sure what the issue is, but it's spilling over to kind of our area. So, I'm just kind of putting that out there. In terms of funding, Choices is very fortunate to receive state and federal funding. We've just gone through our big cycle. So, for the next two years, we should be good to go. We're monitoring Congress and the state legislature. Some of our biggest, one of our biggest grants is at risk of being pulled away after this two-year cycle. So, I'm watching that very closely. But what's important to me and what I'm thankful to say that Blue Ridge Bank, and I'm reaching with the Caverns and some of the other businesses, is to diversify our funding stream. So, we are having what we call the Blue Ridge Gold donors and having them donate to us on a yearly basis for three to five years so that we don't have to depend so much on federal and state grants. I see a lot of nodding. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Counsel, any questions? Very nice presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
Good luck. All right, we do have two public hearings scheduled. Our first public hearing is special use permit 21-02. Before we start the public hearing, I do want to mention I do have a personal conflict of interest in this matter. I will not be commenting on this public hearing. And should it become necessary, I will abstain from voting. Okay, I will open the public hearing on special use permit 21-02, 402 Luray Avenue. Mr. Burke, you have any comments?
No, sir. Everything is in your packet. This is a request for a special use permit to operate a lodging house at 402 Luray Avenue. The Planning Commission did conduct their public hearing at their May 12 meeting and did unanimously recommend approval of the SUP.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burke. All right, we have several folks who have signed up to speak. The first one is, I believe, Vanessa Bob. Vanessa? And you at 419 Fourth Street, Luray?
Mm-hmm, 419. I'm just basically here, I'm not trying to cause any problems, those people in general. I'm here with my neighbors here and there. It's just this bed and breakfast. It's just, it's just, something goes in it shouldn't be. It's in a residence area. We have enough traffic up and down. And it's not fair to us. We've had this going about eight years ago. We had another one across from them. And then people trying to buy an alleyway and all this. It's really ridiculous that towns allow this. And like I said, we're not here to make trouble. We're in East City. Just... I've been here over 17 years. My neighbors, they've been here a long time. And it's kind of outrage. We don't need the traffic. And you don't know who's coming in and out. And like, here's the last time he was avoided because he was blocked because all he was trying to get across was background checks, but they didn't want to listen up here. And he avoided me and the other people here. And I just feel it wasn't fair. We've been here. We take care of our places. We don't do anything, you know. Everybody gets along, but we mind our own business at the same time. Like I said, we're not trying to be bullies or anything. We're just trying to make a statement that we just don't want it here. And that's it. That's all I really got to say.
What happened to the one that was across the street? I remember when that was approved a few years ago.
Bed and breakfast?
Wasn't the one?
No, it was blocked.
It was blocked?
Yeah, she was there too. It was blocked. Wasn't it about eight years ago or so?
About seven.
Yeah, the one right across the street.
It's right across the street from that house.
But the one they want now.
You said they didn't approve it?
No, they didn't approve it, no.
Did not approve it.
And then we had one guy wanted to buy an alleyway and I had to come in for Mrs. Hume. She's a lady I was taking care of at the time. And I didn't understand how a town could allow somebody to buy an alleyway. And I live by one too, and I said, "Could I have that one?" And I could just imagine my neighbors would be outraged. That goes for the town to people to use it. What does the firemen or the ambulance need to go through there? They couldn't because it'd be blocked. And that's just common sense. But like, they've been here. He's been here. But he's been, I think, over 35 years, and we all live across. I live right across from this house. We just don't need the traffic. We got this imagination station that causes a lot of problems. And it's the traffic that's nonstop. That's why I'm here. Like I said, I try to get along with people. Like I said, I'm not here to cause anything, but I think enough is enough. That's all I have to say.
All right, Ms. Bob, thank you. I think Lois Schaefer signed up. She's already gone. I think she made a mistake. Mr. Fudge is gone. Laura McKenzie? Would you mind giving us your full address, Ms. McKenzie?
403 Luray Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I'd written a paper tonight. And I don't think I'm going to have to use it. I really don't because I am the faith that God works in mysterious ways. To have Arise here tonight and to have Lois here tonight about the issues that we are facing in this town is what's in this paper. Families, children, a B&amp;B. Does anybody really know the difference between a regular B&amp;B and an Airbnb? B&amp;B, regular B&amp;B, is in a residence that is monitored 24 hours a day, unless they need to go out for groceries or whatever, okay? Air, B&amp;B, you're supplied the kitchen. That's it. There's no monitoring, no nothing. Why an Airbnb two blocks from a school? I'm sorry, it may not happen this year. It may not happen next year. The way people are now, can you all guarantee our children are going to be safe walking down that hill? Nobody can. It's a residential area. We, there's a fine line that you all, that the town council has to ride. It's between the residents of this town or what business, okay? When it boils down to families not having a home, a place to stay, and live in a motel, but yet you want to bring or let a business come in. I have nothing against them. I wish them well. But not an Airbnb in a residential area two blocks from a school. Okay? Not when we have residents who need places to stay. And I honestly cannot believe, I am the most sheltered person on this earth. I have lived in this town for my 56 years. And I cannot believe that you all do not realize the homeless issue that these families face. If I could provide a parking lot in my backyard, they'd be more than welcome to stay in my yard. These are children. Families losing their children because they have no other choice. So, what's the town going to do for the residents? It was funny this morning, when I got up, and I have Facebook. 99% of the time, you can't believe Facebook. There is a dairy farmer who's desperate for help, that they're even offering to pay the hourly wage and to be able to rent somewhere so they can have their help on that farm. Now, maybe county, but that doesn't mean they're not going to live in the town. Guys, we need to do something besides bringing another B&amp;B in here. We need to look out for our residents. We just, it just boggles the mind. We have children. We are raising our grandchildren and have for the last 12 years. The Airbnb is great. We stayed in one, actually in April. But you know the funny part about the Airbnbs? If you go back and do your research on the Airbnbs, they're not in residential areas. Tennessee, for example, we just stayed in a very nice roundabout. Had probably 10 houses in it. Two residents. And they're the ones that owned all the Airbnbs around, so they could keep an eye on them. It's not the traffic. It's the safety, the economic issues, okay? Property taxes go up. Property values grow up. Go up. That's great. We have elderly up there on fixed incomes. Guess what? They could possibly lose their home because they can't pay their taxes. They can't pay their mortgage. See, the impact of a business in a residential area causes concern for the residents around, especially if they have families. It causes concern for the elderly who are on fixed incomes up there. And that's mostly all we have, is families and elderly. You know, COVID's a bad thing. Thank God, we've made it through up there. We're the boom field. We look out for each other. You know, if you, business up there, we'd look out for them too. But come on, an Airbnb in a residential area that's going to hurt people down the road and residents of the town of Luray? Guys, the decision should be known. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKenzie.
Steve, I'm sorry I stepped out. Maybe I missed something. But the application is for a lodging house?
Yes.
Not an Airbnb, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Well, the lodging house allows for an Airbnb because the difference between a bed and breakfast where the owner has to reside on site, the lodging house, the owner does not need to reside on site.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Harry McKenzie.
I'll pass. She basically pleased me.
All right, sir. Thanks. All right, Ms. McKenzie, thank you. I assume you're at 403 Luray Avenue as well? Okay, all right. All right, James Davis.
Officially James Davis, but I go by Eddie. And I live at 406 Luray Avenue, and I've been there for 33 years. And I know that Mr. Burke's already said that the Planning Commission has unanimously approved that this take place with the lodging house, special use permit. And when we were at the Planning Commission, we expressed basically the same concerns that's been expressed tonight, okay? And no one seemed to have any concerns about our concerns, so they went straight to a vote and approved it. The thing that I had expressed earlier at the Planning Commission was not that someone's moving in. It's just that multiple people will be moving in week after week, and who they are. And we don't know. And I have talked to Chris and family and, nice people, no doubt. It's just one of those things that we're not used to and don't know what it'll bring. That's the thing. We don't know. And Lori has expressed concerns about the schools and things like this. And it's just the uncertainty of who's coming, when they're coming, and that's basically it. But like I said, the Planning Commission said, "What's the problem? There's B&amp;Bs all over town." Well, I think the clarification just came through. This is not a B&amp;B. And that's the difference. But they didn't want to go along and understand that. They kept saying, "What's the problem? What's the problem? We don't understand what your concerns are." Well, we explained what our concerns were. So, anyway, we're doing the same thing tonight. So, obviously, it's up to y'all. Y'all already got the Planning Commission's blessings on this. And that's where it goes now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. All right, the next one to speak is Vanessa Kulik. Did you sign the wrong form, Ms.?
Yes.
You're not the first one to do that. All right, sir. Anybody else here who would like to speak on this public hearing? Give us your name and address for our records, please.
Julie ALSUP, at 402 Luray Avenue.
I'm sorry.
402 Luray Avenue. We're here for the special.
What was your first name, ma'am?
Julie ALSUP. Glad to be here. Glad to be here tonight. Thank you. Uh, my husband, Chris, and family are glad to be here too. And we had the chance to work with the planning commissioner, talk through in, in this forum, um, what our plan is. And, you know, we're really excited to invest in this community. And it's, it was just so, uh, my heart's heavy when you hear about the challenges. And I started thinking in my head, what can we do? What can we do to help, right? As a family, as Christians, as just people who care about community? We've got kids. I hear about kids sleeping in cars. I mean, that's, that's something. And so, um, so we don't take that lightly. So here we talk about a special use permit for rental and it feels light compared to this heavy stuff. But we care about community and that's who we are. We operate by the golden rule. Uh, you know, if I'm, if we've got kids, I don't want somebody in the house next to me partying. No, thank you. Um, and so it's kind of step back a little bit. So, you know, while we lived in the city, worked in, in DC and as we kind of work our way west, as all folk, a lot of folks like to do, and you kind of get to what matters. We bought a little place in Fort Valley about five years ago. So our girls could play in a creek and be on a tire swing and do what we did growing up in Texas and in Illinois and the country. And, uh, and that was really important. And then we realized how much fun it was to have our guests, you know, experience it and go, this is what it's all about. This area is amazing. Um, and then we started renting it when we couldn't be out there. So, and it was, that was an awesome experience through Airbnb. And we became super hosts, which means we're responsive. We, we vet our guests. We take good care. All the things we should do, cleanliness, et cetera. We, we, we take care of business. Um, and so that's been, that's been terrific. And we also have great neighbors out there who've been great, no complaints. You know, they, we all look out for each other, just like this community, which is awesome to hear. Um, and we'd love to find that same thing here. We'd love for the community to give us a chance. There's so many great people here. Um, I would say this, you know, with that experience, we, we vet all, uh, anyone who wants to rent, right? We, um, through Airbnb. There's a, there's a setting with Airbnb, you can just let people automatically book. We don't do that. Because it's our investment too, right? Our over $200,000 house that we purchased here. No, thank you. We are going to make sure it's the right people. It's a family house. And any rental, you better believe in all of the documents before anyone is even able to apply. This isn't a party house, just like our other house. This is for families. This is to, um, come and enjoy, bring your revenues, come enjoy this beautiful hiking and all the towns and shops. And I'd say with our other place, we just found that, you know, what a joy it was for us when we'd say, try this restaurant. Have you been to that cool movie theater? All these things coming across the mountain from Fort Valley. And people later go, oh, my gosh, we can't wait to come back. Did you try that, you know, this place and that place? And so, you know, we just had somebody booked yesterday. They want to come bring their family to the caverns. So why are they staying on the other side of the mountain? Right? Uh, let's stay right here in town and, and provide those, um, that benefit here, uh, in this beautiful community. And it is a wonderful house with a lot of history. And so we got excited about this investment. So I share all that, um, because it's true and it's a great community. We drove in and say, and look at those mountain views, right? It's a, it's a special place. So I say all this, I mentioned, we operate by the golden rule. Those things really matter to us. Um, and this school, that school is a really important point. And our kids have played over at that playground. Uh, nobody wants safer kids than, than people who have kids too, right? Um, and that's important. But I think we all know when people usually stay at an Airbnb, you know, you come in, you, you stay the night, maybe you make breakfast and then you go out and you go hike. And you come downtown and you, you know, you grab lunch and you do all those things and you support the community. But, um, again, it's not a party house. We have really strict rules and, and we take it very personally because this is opening up our homes. So, um, I just want to, you know, kind of put a fine point on the way we operate and where our values are. Um, I think that's important. And just again, um, we ask that you give us a chance and let us invest and be part of the community and, and, um, and go forward from there. So, you know, thank you for the chance to be here today. Appreciate it. If you have any questions, let me know, or my husband, Chris.
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, I, uh, do, so the house, when it's not being rented, um, you guys don't live there at all, right?
Correct. Right. We bought it, we bought it to, to rent. We will come out and we've already come out and used it just as a home base for us to explore the area too. Um, but right, but we do have, um, we have folks, we already, um, we have someone who comes and mows for us. So we keep everything, it'll look amazing. Um, who's local, he actually knows our neighbor, one of our neighbors. Um, and then we have cleaning ladies who have, they're from Rileyville. They've been cleaning at our Fort Valley house for five years and they're awesome. And so they know us and it's just nice to have those relationships. So we support local too, but, but we make sure everything's going to look fantastic the days that we're not here, uh, as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak on this, uh, this matter? Mr. Burke, do we have any emails or letters? Nothing, okay. All right, counsel.
I kind of see it as, as two broad sort of issues is, is one with the traffic and the people who stay there. I, I, I use Airbnb pretty much everywhere I go exclusively. And, you know, as generally speaking, I am supportive of it. I lived for about 10 years, lived outside of bed and breakfast and, you know, it was four rooms and coming and going. I mean, really, it's basically still being used as a single family house. So it really doesn't change a whole bunch, I believe, the people coming and going. I think it, to a certain degree, it could be less, uh, than maybe if it was a family of four or five. But I think you're a good point. I mean, we, you know, we just had a, a presentation about the lack of affordable full-time rental units. And we turned around and we're talking about Airbnb. And I don't know how many we have in town, but I mean, it's definitely a dilemma as far as I look at it. I appreciate the planning commission's work on it. And again, I, I generally have always expressed support of these things, but also understand exactly where the neighbors are coming from. And it's something different. I think there was, as far as your contact, had you heard from the applicant? Not that it makes a big difference. The first you heard about it was when you sort of got noticed, I assume?
First we heard about it is when you welcomed the neighbors to the neighborhood and found out that it was an Airbnb.
It was going to be, they were going to apply, okay. That, that's really big, not a big deal. But, uh, I, I, I really understand and appreciate where, where you're coming from on this. And it is, it's different. I mean, it's, it is, it is, you know, it is to a certain degree, yes, it is a commercial use. I've stayed in Airbnbs everywhere, community, you know, places, places like that, you know, like small towns and, and, you know, I think most of the time you do know who's coming in and it's, it's, it's the people vetted, vetted pretty well. But again, I think my, my dilemma is probably the lack of rental. And not that you have to be the ones to provide affordable housing starting tonight, but it is just sort of interesting to sort of juxtapose what we just heard. And, and, you know, we do have these, so that's my comments, I guess.
For me, that has absolutely no bearing. I'll be quite honest, not to be callous to, to homeless or people in need of affordable housing, but that shouldn't limit. To me, that doesn't limit anybody from using their property, provided it's something that works for that particular area and that, in that particular setting. I would say on the other hand, is there's something to be said for diversity of, uh, of the people that are beside you? Because you could also get someone that would, they could sell the home to someone and their kid has a real love for death metal until, you know, 10:00 PM in life. So it could, it could work out well for you too, even if we do decide, whichever way we do decide as a counsel. It does give me pause that there's so many sort of neighbors that are coming out to speak. That's a little unusual for these things, at least in my experience on counsel.
You're right, Joey. This is, I think, the first time I've heard as much opposition to a lodging house or Airbnb. But at the same time, you know, I, I, I don't have much problem if somebody owning property and wanting to do something with it that's within the law. I mean, special use permit is what it's for, you know? So we, we have to make decisions. This is a hard one here. I don't want to put you guys away from making, I don't see anything wrong with Airbnb, but I don't live next to one. I've used them. And I want to be sensitive to your feelings about living next to one. So I don't, I wish there was a factor that would make it easy to vote one way or the other. But it doesn't seem to be one.
I'd like to share just some experience, um, on sort of both sides of this. For Mr. Davis and McKenzie, um, Mrs. McKenzie, the, I've lived in town, here in the town of Luray, most all of my life as well. A few years that I lived away, but, but came back. The recent home that I lived in in Luray for 23 years, we wound up with a Airbnb about four doors down. Okay, from where, from where I live. I didn't know what to expect with that. Had some concerns, the exact same concerns that have been mentioned here. And once again, I'm just sharing experience. That has been in operation for a number of years. I can say that the property looks the best that it had ever looked during the 23 years that we were there. The last four or five years, um, that it operated as an Airbnb. Nothing out of the way as far as guests coming and going, no problems, no, it was just another house in the neighborhood that was actually better maintained and probably somewhat quieter than the homes that had permanent residents in it. Once again, I'm just sharing an experience. The other thing that I haven't heard mentioned tonight from, from those of you that live close by, um, I'm familiar with this house. My mother grew up in this house. Of course, I don't have memories of that, but my mother does. So my eyes have been on this house through a number of years, just knowing the history. And at least the last 15 years, I'd say, and I'm, I'm probably wrong with this, it's probably been vacant more than it's been occupied. I think there was someone that may have bought it before you folks that had started some, what of a process of some fixing, but that stopped. And just from my history and Chief Cook would probably support this as well. I'm just making an observation. Through my years with law enforcement, a vacant home in a neighborhood was more of a threat or more of a concern than an occupied home. Uh, as far as things happening, things going wrong. And I've also had that experience here in Luray where I lived on Court Street. We had a vacant home. There's some issues that happened with the vacant home. It was, I never had any problem or issues with the Airbnb. So this also comes full circle around to the affordable housing. For years, this house was not used as housing for anyone. So whether it be low income, mid-income, it was vacant many years of its life, for the last several years. And this is me personally laying eyes on it, uh, because I had a somewhat of an emotional connection to it. But to see the money being spent, the investment being made, and that home being better today as it stands than anything I ever saw during my lifetime, knowing that it was my mother's home. It looks more pristine and it's the best it's looked. So that's just a thought of the, the housing issue. It, it, it had that opportunity, but it was never used for that. I mean, people live there, don't get me wrong. But I mean, when we talk about trying to find affordable housing and whatnot, it was in, and could be that it was in such disrepair that it just didn't fit the bill. But anytime we look at whether it's Airbnb, a permanent resident for somebody that's going to fix it up to live there themselves, a rental or whatever the case may be, someone has to step to the plate and spend the money and take that chance and make that investment. And like I say, I've never met you folks, uh, but, I mean, the effort's made there. And it might be a little different plan than what the neighbors are thinking, but I'm still looking at an improvement in that neighborhood that is still better today, whichever way this vote goes, than what that house has been for the last 10, 12 years at least that, that I've ridden by and looked at it. And, uh, and the potential for problems that an empty house presents in any neighborhood, a vacant home. That's all I had. Just wanted to share that.
No, good, good points, Jason. And I agree. I, I don't get the connection really between how prohibiting these folks from opening a lodging house or Airbnb there would, is going to assist the problem with affordable housing? I mean, that's never going to be affordable housing. So I, I don't, I don't get that connection, um, the, the argument that's being made. Yes, I, I agree. We do need to be aware of the need for affordable housing in the community and act on that. And we are, I mean, to a certain extent. We're doing as much as we can. I think we've accomplished quite a bit with some of the affordable housing that we provided. But this type of use, um, is not contradictory or, or damaging to efforts towards affordable housing. And I agree with Jason. I've lived, I lived up close to where Leggins addressing, uh, I've, I've lived for a long time. And that mechanic street has a lot of B and Bs on it. And, um, it was never a problem. I mean, I, I mean, you don't, uh, the clientele that's attracted to the, to the B and Bs and the, and the lodging homes aren't going to be the type of people that are going to cause your neighborhood problems. And if they do, um, that's what Chief Cook and his guys are for. And if they do.
What is the plan? Having a business that is actually going to throw your elderly into a homelessness situation?
How, how's that going to happen, ma'am?
Because your property values go up, your taxes go up. You're living on a fixed income. Do you know what a fixed income is? You have so much a month. Now, can you all guarantee me that a lot of the elderly up on the Boomfield is not going to be affected by the property values and the taxes? Are you going to tell me that the children are going to be 100, or 85% safe? Because I'm telling you, we have a lot of issues.
I can't promise you that. No ma'am. Ma'am, you had your opportunity to speak and you've, it's, we're trying to address it now. I can't guarantee you that. Property values are going up very rapidly here. And it's not because of Airbnbs. Property values are going up, people that are moving into the area and paying a lot for these houses and, and the property values are going up. So no, I can't guarantee you that the elderly, uh, won't have problems with their taxes and their property values going up. What I am saying is, I don't think that this type of use in the neighborhood is going to be detrimental in any way to other efforts to address some of those issues. As a matter of fact, the only way we can address some of those issues is with a, a viable tax rate and a viable income stream to the town where we have the revenues to help some of those people. And to have those types of revenues, we depend on businesses like this. They will pay a considerable amount of tax that the normal residents there aren't paying. And which goes towards projects that the town can do to continue that. And so I, I, I'm, 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 I don't mean to be disrespectful at all, but I just don't get that connection. So that, and then the, the traffic, I mean, I heard, I, I, I don't think that, um, a lodging facility of this size is going to generate, um, a great deal of traffic that you're not seeing already. No more than if the house were rented to a family of six. If a house were rented, the house could be rented tomorrow to a family of six. And it could be more problems than people coming in and, and out on a regular basis. So I, I don't, um, I don't, I don't see a, a problem with it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would agree. I, I agree with everything that, um, my fellow council members have said this evening. Um, and if it's okay, Mayor, um, I'd like to ask Chief Cook, can you speak to, have you, has it been your experience or have your, have your men seen, um, a number of calls from Airbnb and/or B and B within the town limits? So for what that's? But not from disres, yeah, disruptive tenants or anything out of, out of the order? Yeah, and I, and just for the record, I've grown up in the Boomfield. I currently reside in the Boomfield. We, my husband and I have owned a home there for 18 years. And, and you're right, we look out for our neighbors and I think that's our community as a whole. It's not the intent tonight. I don't, I think, I feel confident I can speak for the council, um, to dismiss any of the concerns that's been brought before us this evening. We appreciate your time and, and coming here and sharing that with us. And we, we certainly do not take it lightly. And, um, yes, I will also say that, um, there is a real need here as it relates to, um, housing, affordable housing, resources for our seniors, et cetera. I'll also say that I, I am in agreeance and I, I certainly do not feel like this one particular property is going to be that detrimental to the situation that we're dealing with already. And, and to Mr. Shiro's point, um, it, it is businesses like this that we do need to see, um, you know, an increase in for the, for the sake of diversifying the revenue base here and so that we are not having to heavily rely on the existing property owners, that we are not year over year having to increase taxes on you to support, um, you know, the budget that's necessary just to remain, uh, you know, to keep our lights on and, and to remain in order and to pay our, our fire and safety folks. And, um, so with that being said, uh, again, I appreciate you all coming out this evening. I think this is a strong application and, um, I would hope that the neighbors, uh, you know, regardless of the outcome, uh, that you can. that you can work together in community and in good spirit and, you know, support the outcome, whatever it may be.
All right, council, any other councilman have comments?
All I think I would say is, focusing like you're very thoughtful and will, will do a good job is, and it maybe, maybe give you some comfort is if we make this part of special use, non-transferable. Not that you were planning on selling it or anything like that, but in theory, the, the SUP would run with the property unless noted. So maybe that would bring some, at least level that you know the owners and you could talk to the owners if there's an issue. So that would be maybe my recommendation that we just add a, if, if, if the, you know, if, if the thought is to approve it, just add that as.
Would that mean that if they sold their property, then it'd be another special use?
They'd have to come back and get it, right, right.
Okay, that makes sense.
One other thing we haven't.
No, but my.
They'd have to come here. I mean, they'd have to come before planning commission, then come before us.
Jason, can we do that?
But it typically run with the property, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
One other thing we, did you need to clarify a point there real quick?
Jason, you want to clarify this for us, or whether we can do this or not, the non-transferable part?
I don't know that I can speak to that definitively. I can say that I've not seen a special use permit restricted in that fashion of those that I've worked with.
I would do, I mean, I went through this in Madison County. We've had a long, deep conversation about transferability, and it's definitely within the, the ability of the government. From what I've read, the government can put conditions on it if we feel as if that's something that, you know, serves an interest, which in, in this particular case, I believe it does.
Is the home owned by a single-use LLC? Or is it owned by use? Is it owned by a single-use LLC, or it's just you all?
We purchased it as us, but we have created an LLC to put it under just for liability.
Complicate matters a little more if you can, if you transfer it via the LLC, sell, sell the business.
Would that be something you're agreeable to? Okay, I mean, you're agreeable to it, so it's, it's not, right.
The one other thing I just wanted to mention, I don't think we've touched on yet, is, yeah, we do have a need for affordable housing. We also have a need for lodging in our town and county, as we've already discussed tonight. We're sold out for the fourth, and you think every time that we're sold out, that's, that's another opportunity where someone's gonna stay in a county over, or several towns over, and they're gonna keep their revenue in that area, instead of bringing it to Luray, which is gonna boost our restaurants, gonna boost several small businesses that are then in turn providing jobs for citizens. So it's, you know, it, it, there's a lot to be said for us, not just through this opportunity, but I'd like to encourage others to try to do something, whether it's this Airbnb or whatever, to bring more lodging to the town of Luray.
All right, council, any other comments? All right, hearing none, I will close this public hearing. Council, what's your pleasure?
Well, Mayor, I think this is one of the harder ones we've done, but I'm gonna move that the town council approves the special use permit to operate a lodging house at four oh two Luray Avenue with the conditions noted as presented.
I second it.
Danielle, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Shiro. Mr. Shiro.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. Fowers.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Okay, the special use permit is approved. All right, we have another public hearing. A little public hearing, Town Council Public Hearing, Consideration of Sustainable Energy Systems, item eight B dash five one seven, sustainable energy systems. Mr. Burke, any comments on this?
Uh, no, sir. The amendment presented to y'all has been modified since our last presentation to you. Some of the changes are in bold. The one item the council had been specific about in five seventeen point two, the application for a special use permit for a sustainable energy project should include the following. It's not required for, for y'all's consideration in the, in the future. As well as if you go to the, the second page of setback requirements, should, and a minimum fifty feet should, so that it does provide council with the ability to have some flexibility upon any future applications.
So the idea is that the total qualitative aspects of this SUP will be what determines approval or disapproval, right?
Yes, sir. There's recommendations of how the.
Strict benchmarks.
But you have the flexibility to determine if a site-specific deviation is warranted.
All right, nobody signed up to speak on this one. Steve, any, any letters, emails?
No, sir.
Phone calls, anything? Okay. All right, hearing nothing. I'll close the public hearing. Council?
Let me ask a question.
Yes, sir.
I know the county's having lots of talk about, you know, small-scale, large-scale alternative energy. I have solar panels in my house. I guess we did, and I helped get the turbine at the high school. And I remember at that time, there was no ordinances for anything. It took two years to get the turbine put up through all the stakeholders. I didn't seem to have any trouble getting solar panels in my house, but finally, is this the first ordinance we ever came up with? Cause I've read through it, and it looks like it makes a lot of sense, all the here for's and there for's.
Well, yes, sir. This was actually developed by the Northern Shenandoah Regional Commission.
That's what I thought.
As a, as a guidance for all of the, the communities.
So it doesn't seem to me that there's any opposition to this at all. I'm just glad that we're ahead of the county in this case.
Well, the intent is, is that for the small scale, for residential use.
Right.
It provides relatively simple, if you're putting on solar panels, it, it's by right. When it gets into the larger applications, that's where it becomes a special use permit. So it gives council the ability to hear the merits of whatever is proposed and consider what impacts could be.
So the way I understand, I don't think there's any opposition to this at all that I know of, unless somebody else has the other side, we shouldn't do it.
Well, again, nobody, no one has spoken against it, or we've heard.
I'm in here.
Yeah, well, anybody on the council?
And I brought up my sound thing, you know, just the annoyance of sound, but that would be covered, that would be covered in like an SUP or something if we, you know.
All right, well, let's close this public hearing.
I thought you did.
Oh, yeah.
I thought you already did that.
Good on this one?
We're just discussing it now, I thought.
Okay, well, whatever you want to do, go ahead.
I'm gonna make a motion. Are you ready for the motion?
Uh, yeah, sure.
No one else wants to talk about it.
I don't think he has to be ready. You can say it even if he's not.
Well, then, somebody, hopefully somebody will second it. I can't find it now, darn it.
Are you ready for the motion?
I move the town council adopt the amendment in section five seventeen, sustainable energy systems as presented to take effect immediately.
Second that.
All right, Danielle?
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. Fowers.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Vickers.
Yes.
Ms. Lillard.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so that, that's done. All right, moving on. Mr. Burke, town budget adoption.
Yes, sir. Council's requested to adopt the FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Town council conducted your public hearing. At your last meeting, there were no speakers. Some of the highlights include funding towards, continued funding towards Luray Meadows Apartments Project, the wastewater treatment plant improvements, funding for a replacement of the imagination station playground, funding for the upgrades of the police communication equipment, upgrading the town's website, and then allowing our parks and rec staff to implement a long-term improvement program. And it also includes a two percent cost of living salary adjustment for staff.
All right, council, comments, discussion?
It's a good budget, in my opinion. I'm glad we're able to keep the taxes what they are and keep the two percent COVID.
Well, looking through that, the, the work that Mary and Danielle put into that, thank you. Quite a bit of work. Thank you.
I'm very excited that we can fund the new playground in full. That's nice to see.
As a parent of young kids, I, I agree with that, yeah.
Yeah, everything we do should be family orientated, in my opinion, and that, the thing, the structure out there passes life, so it's good to do something.
I agree. Mayor, I did have, I did have kind of a comment, more or less. Looking at the fee schedule, I've had a few phone calls with some folks that were of interest with the food trucks and was inquiring about the peddler's fee and, you know, not necessarily wanting to pay the five, the five hundred dollar for the annual peddler, peddler fee and wanting to know about, you know, what.
Right.
Right, and so Mr. Burke had shared with me that the way that they've been currently permitting and working with even our existing businesses was they're kind of a special events, one time, twenty-five dollar a day. So I just wonder, as opposed to making exceptions to the way in which the structure, the fee structure is currently listed, is there a reason why we cannot look at amending this fee schedule to allow for a twenty-five dollar weekend?
So the, the fee schedules are actually coming up on the rate schedule.
I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself.
No, let's, let's go ahead and prove, let's prove the budget.
Hey, thank you all for your work on it. I'll go ahead and make a motion. I move that council adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget as presented and authorize the mayor to execute the resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
I want to second that.
What did I do wrong?
I'm seconding that.
I'm sorry. What did I do wrong?
Uh, nothing, nothing.
All right, Danielle?
Mr. Fowers.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Okay, and now we'll move on to the town rate schedule. Who wants to go first? Uh, you know, Stephanie in the past, we've, we've gone over this, and so our current, what page is that on, actually? Current rate is five hundred an annual permit, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I thought it was actually thirty-five per, uh, one day. It's twenty-five?
It is twenty-five.
Stephanie, I can give you a little history on that. As a citizen, I was involved in that, not on council. But, and this was doing some homework, looking at some other localities, Harrisonburg being the main one that I spoke with. I'm not against food trucks. I think all that's great. Our plans when we open works out have a food truck as well, along with the brick and mortar. The only thing with that is the difference of food trucks and brick and mortars. The person that invests in a brick and mortar business has a lot of skin in the game on initial purchase of the property or rent of the property, setup, everything else. You gotta provide a public bathroom ADA accessible, you gotta shovel the snow and ice off the sidewalks, and three hundred and sixty-five days a year, that's your spot. You can't change that. So you've got a large investment that can't move, basically. Food trucks, on the other hand, being mobile, other counties, whatever. So you take like a big event in town, and I'm not saying, hey, keep the food trucks away. I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying is, if you have an event and ten food trucks roll in from out of town at twenty-five bucks apiece for the day to collect the profits on whatever they sell, everything that that food truck sells, and this is how business works, this is capitalism, that's fine. But anyway, it, it needs to be a fair playing field. For someone to just spend twenty-five dollars and leave that day with a couple thousand dollars in sale where the brick and mortar had, has to be there, lost, I mean, they're in competition basically with food truck. It doesn't have some of the obligations that the brick and mortar does. The brick and mortar's paying real estate taxes.
Sure, I understand.
You know, the, the insurance, everything with it. A food truck is a large investment as far as what's spent to, to do it right, but it's also something that when you go to sell it, someone in North Carolina might buy your Luray food truck.
Right.
But if you're trying to sell your Luray restaurant, someone's got to come to Luray. So it's, it's a lot more skin in the game for the brick and mortar. And that's where the, yes, five hundred dollars sounds like a whole lot of money, but if you're gonna be here regular, that's a drop in the bucket compared to the investment that a brick and mortar makes.
Right, right.
That can't, you know, when, when something's happening in Shenandoah, or something's happening in Harrisonburg, you can't run to that.
Sure.
You're, you're still sitting here.
Right.
And so anyway, that's, that was the argument. It's the same thing Harrisonburg had done, that they were, the fees were based on what was going on there. Theirs wasn't food that made their big decision years ago, it was furniture. When those Carolina furniture trucks would come in, set up in a parking lot, sell recliners and mattresses and stuff all weekend, and your brick and mortar furniture stores wouldn't sell anything, because everybody's going there buying the cheap recliners and everything else. And, and then that group leaves with all that profit, and the brick and mortar's still paying the town taxes and.
Sure, yeah.
So there's, and if you, if you don't look at it that way, it is hard to understand, or you just look at a fee and say, wow, five hundred dollars, you know, but.
Right, right. No, I hear what you're saying, and I respect that by all means. The, the couple of phone calls that I had, and I've spoke, of course, as well with, with Jackie, just trying to understand opportunities with some of the events and, and attract, bringing in other vendors, and looking at, well, and I think we can, we, we can all say in the last few weekends, just driving down Main Street on a Sunday, or, you know, really anytime after the dinner hour, sidewalks are full, but it was just, we, we keep talking, we need more restaurant options, we need more restaurant options. And so I know a lady that owns the old auction house, her name escapes me, Susan.
Corbin.
Yeah. She was one specific phone call that I had, and, you know, was expressing some concern about trying to retain a food truck because of the, paying the five hundred dollars. And, and so we were having that conversation, and that's kind of what got me here, speaking with Mr. Burke and inquiring about, well, if we're making the exception, if we are allowing it, then, because just at one glance on our fee schedule here, it suggests that, that we are not. And so, again, I hear what you're saying, and I'm, I'm not dismissing any of that by any means. But in the, in the event where we're having the Fourth of July, or, or whatever those events may look like, if someone were to just pull up this fee schedule and take a look at it, it would be very quick, they could very quickly say, oh, food trucks must, you know, be permitted unless I'm gonna pay that five hundred dollars. And if I'm only looking to go for this one event, then I'm not gonna go.
So you mean if we're more from an informational standpoint, like it just maybe needs, the messaging needs to be more.
Could be, yes.
Clarified for that, because right now, if it's a town event.
Correct.
It's, pardon? It's, it's waived if it's a town event, yeah, a town-sponsored event.
And if it's a one-day permit or something, and, and, and that makes sense. If you were coming here for one day to set up a food truck, well, no, you can't spend five hundred dollars and come here for one day and sell and leave. It's, but if you're gonna be a regular here, that, that's, that's not out of.
So how about for the concert series? Would that be, would that would be, how would that work? If there was a food truck that wanted to come in during, like on a Friday when we have the concert series?
They would need to, to talk with the town. Historically, we've not had food vendors at the, the concert series other than the, the schools have been providing free food to, to, to students. Again, we, we, if, if there was a desire to expand the, what is, the services provided at the evening sun main, we probably want to talk with LDI as well, because the, the intent, the original intent of the downtown concerts was to have an event that would draw people downtown so that then they would eat downtown, shop downtown.
Right, and I'm all for that, when we have a lot of, when we have enough restaurants to hold everybody downtown, for sure.
But it's, it's sort of.
And, and that are open, that's right, yes.
It's sort of almost similar to the conversation about Airbnb, and to a certain degree. It's very similar, they're kind of the same. But if, by, but we have been charging, I understand, twenty-five dollars for, if they do come in, like the brewery. I think that's a, you know, I understand what Jason's saying, but it's kind of, again, it's sort of like Airbnb. It's sort of, we talked about food trucks and Airbnb's ten years ago, we didn't know what you're talking about. Now it's just sort of, it's just part of life. And I, I'm supportive of it, but I don't want to hurt the local business. But like Stephanie said, there's been some times where there's just not a lot of options on certain days. And if they're willing to set up across the street or at the brewery, I don't think, I hope they don't take away from the local business. But I, I would rather just codify it and just say here, if we're gonna do this, just put in there, it's either five hundred dollars or twenty-five dollars a day, or thirty-five dollars a day, or whatever we want to come up with.
But it is actually in the code, and, and, and Jason and I were just talking, well, talking about it, that if the, it's a more complex consideration because it's already codified than just consideration of, of, of the rate schedule.
I mean, just put it on the actual rate schedule we advertise.
And we can do that.
Yeah, it's, it's twenty-five dollars a day or five hundred dollars for the year.
And meals taxes collected, correct? Yes, sir. Yes.
Lunch, your meals, receipts.
I'm not sure I understand exactly how the law states, if somebody want to come in and park on the side of the street without a parking meter, and they sit there all day as a food truck, can they do that, or do they have to be?
We don't allow parking within the ride of way. An itinerary vendor has to secure private property, use of private property.
I was asking that because I think I remember the issue being, you know, if somebody pulled up right in front of. up right in front of your store, a food truck, I mean, that's like closing the public off to going into the restaurant, so I'm, yeah, I'm against that.
Yeah.
So it sounds like it's, it's set, like it should be.
Do you remember the first one we ever had in town?
I'm trying to think back.
Thirteen, fourteen years ago, it was a guy that set up a barbecue place right here where the new park is.
Park and park.
Yeah, sell barbecue. So we always just told them they had, just had to be in a safe spot that didn't have any obvious.
But we can't use a parking space on the main street, that's, that's.
No, no, it'd need to be on, Steve said, on private property, have some kind of demonstrate that it's safe in some regard, you know.
And in the case where you receive an applicant that you're unfamiliar, or application that you're unfamiliar with, I suspect there is some type of a property or site visit that's conducted by staff.
Yes, typically what we, what we require or request is written agreement between the property owner and the vendor, and then kind of a sketch of where they're placing, we, we did that same process with the barbecue that located over at the auction house across the street. They, they originally had some hesitancy about the five hundred dollars, we told them that we would work with them because they were only planning to come in, I think, four or five weekends over the summer, so that we did consider that the, the special event for the, the auction house, they supplied a, where they're gonna set up, and an agreement with the, the owner, and, and they were, we issued them the, the one day permits for those days.
So there's no limit on how many one day permits? I mean, so they could do it consecutively for six months if they wanted?
That would be higher than.
Yeah, because I did, I backed, I kind of backed into the math on that with Susan, and, I mean, if you're gonna be here for tourist season, pay five hundred dollars, right? If you're gonna be here for the season, but if you're gonna come and go, kind of plug and play.
And I think what you'll see with the food trucks are that if the volume is here, the, the trucks will come, and the, and the, and the permit fee is not gonna be the deterring if, if they're selling the volume of food.
That's right.
But if they come and the volume is not what everyone's thinking it is, then, and that's another good thing, that the truck has the option, they can go to a spot, and they'll be up to three weekends, like, well, we really don't move much product here, they go to another town, but the person that puts the money into a brick and mortar, you don't pick up after three weekends and say, I'm gonna move this to another town.
Right, right.
You're, you're committed.
Yeah, you're right, and on the flip side, it does allow that person the opportunity to test the market, right?
Right.
And if they're here for a few weeks and it works well.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden the property, a real estate, yeah.
No, I'm gonna make this.
Well, yeah, that, that being said, if there's a real estate that becomes available, and it's like, I'd like to take this sub shop from my truck to the brick and mortar down here in the corner, and so, yeah.
Those that have done that, right.
There's, there's a fair argument, I feel like, to be made on, on both sides for sure, and, you know, I hope you don't mind me sharing, but Jackie and I had lunch earlier last week, I believe, and this was just, this also was some of the discussion that she and I was having, and, so.
I just don't think twenty-five dollars is unreasonable, I mean, if you take you and your wife and have a dinner and a drink, you're gonna spend that twenty-five dollars on the first two customers the guy has, I mean, that's.
Honestly, it feels a little low to me, you know.
For a daily fee, I would feel like maybe we can do fifty.
I thought it was thirty-five.
So then, like, you think if, if someone comes in four weekends, they come in all four weekends in October.
Fifty, yeah.
And they snipe, they snipe twenty percent of your annual revenue, you know, in that one month, right? And that's, that's about what it is, be twenty percent.
Well, your brick and mortars are here from January through April.
And they're counting one of those leap peepers, right? And then you're kind of going, yeah.
Trucks aren't rolling in here in March, because.
And you're hiring local people, most of the, I don't know, these city's out of town trucks, it's hiring many local, now I realize there's an issue with hiring, hiring local people.
That is a very delicate line to walk around.
I know, and as soon as I said that, I know it's wrong, but no, you know, it's an issue, but.
I'm getting hungry. It just needs to be a level, a level playing field for both sides.
Yes, sir.
Both sides should be treated fair and it be a level playing field, not a huge advantage to either one.
Yes, sir.
It'd be interesting to see total cost of average, average rent for a restaurant in Lou Ray, fully loaded, between insurance and.
Oh, fifteen hundred, two thousand a month, I guess.
And then you divide that by thirty and then get some kind of reasonable number.
Most trucks only have workers comp.
It's definitely not twenty-five dollars a day, it's definitely more than twenty-five dollars.
Well, we could say fifty dollars a day.
So what, what we're gonna do?
Five hundred and you're fifty a day.
Just put the twenty-five dollars in, or maybe increase?
Unfortunately.
Well, you can't change the amount.
Well, we can't, but because it's specified in the code, we have to have public, we have to advertise.
Sure, sure.
For that specific item, but we can definitely have that discussion, because.
It's good food for thought, though, right? Pun intended. I really didn't mean that.
The code says twenty-five dollars a day.
My apologies.
Steve, is that what it says?
Yes.
The code says, okay.
It is, it is, yes.
Okay.
I just think it's very fair, I don't know why we get a lot of complaints about it, but I, I think it's a fair fee, I don't, I don't understand.
I might close up the brick and mortar.
Oh heavens. Why did I bring this up?
Put wheels on the building, maybe.
The profits would be better.
Oh, you could franchise that place, what are you talking about?
Okay, any other discussion on the rate schedule?
All right, we approve this.
I read recently that the counties want to do the cigarette tax, and they're gonna charge more than we do, right, with fifteen cents a pack, and they're gonna charge twenty cents a pack, is that correct?
We're more than fifteen, aren't we?
We're actually, we were fourteen. We need to approve the rate.
Only fifteen, okay.
I remember when we started doing cigarette tax, it was the big thing, and we made like a hundred thousand a year because of cigarette tax, who knew that was gonna happen? So now the county can do it, they want to charge a tax, and if we're cheaper than county, maybe we'll get all the tobacco users to come to town to buy their cigarettes.
Yes, sir.
All right, so we need a motion to approve the rate schedule.
And so we, I'm sorry, so we did decide, or we are, or we are not?
Are we just gonna advertise the rate in there for twenty-five dollars?
We can incorporate underneath the itinerant merchant.
Just put the twenty-five.
Special event, twenty-five dollars.
Should that be included in the motion, then?
If, if you'd like.
Specifically?
Yes, it's a little more clear.
Yeah, that is clear, that makes me.
Someone's not scared away if they're just looking for a day, or a couple days.
All right, anybody want to make that motion, approve the rate schedule?
I move that the council adopt the ordinance for the FYI 2021-2022 rate and fee schedule as presented to include adding the twenty-five dollar daily fee for peddlers and authorize the mayor to execute the resolution adopting the FYI 2021-2022 rate and fees.
I'll second that.
Daniel?
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Bickers.
Yes.
Ms. Lillard.
Yes.
Mr. Crowe.
Yes.
Mr. Pennitt.
Yes.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke, code amendment, article three, parks conduct.
Yes, sir, this is an item that we have been discussing regarding some changes to the, the rules within our parks, following discussion with council at your, your last meeting, section ninety-eight thirty-three has been amended to remove decisions on metal detecting from council and dumping it on the town manager.
Dumping it on the town manager.
And this does not require a public hearing, as determined by the town attorney.
All right, council, discussion?
I'm cutting draft.
Motion?
I make the motion. I move the town council adopt the code amendment to article three, conduct within the use of parks as presented to be effective upon adoption. I'll second it.
Daniel?
Mr. Bickers.
Yes.
Ms. Lillard.
Yes.
Mr. Crowe.
Yes.
Mr. Pennitt.
Yes.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke, rescind continuity and government ordinance.
Yes, sir, on August thirteenth, twenty twenty, council adopted our emergency ordinance for continuity in government to allow, as a result of the outbreak of COVID-nineteen, the code included language that it would expire six months after the outbreak was resolved. The governor has terminated executive order seventy-two and the order of public health affected, emergency nine, effective midnight, May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, and the Page County Local Emergency Declaration expired, May twelfth, twenty, twenty twenty-one. Staff would recommend council's consideration of rescinding the emergency ordinance.
Okay, any discussion?
I think the mayor should still read it to us once in a while, just for.
Good old times.
Just for old times.
Any, any intelligent discussion?
I think it should be framed for his mayor's office. I think we should frame it for your office.
I'll be happy, yeah, all right.
I'll move that the town council rescind the emergency ordinance, continuity in the government of Lou Ray, Virginia, as presented.
Second, anybody?
Second then.
Let's off the hook.
Well, who got it? You get that, Daniel, who got the second, okay. All right, Daniel?
Ms. Lillard.
Yes.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Mr. Pennitt.
Yes.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
I, I vote yes. Did you say my name? I didn't hear that.
All right, Mr. Burke, code amendment, chapter eighty-two eighty-nine, motorized scooters and motorized skateboards.
Yes, sir, our police department has noticed an increased use of motorized scooters and skateboards within the town limits. The state code allows the town to establish regulations prohibiting the use of motorized scooters and skateboards on our sidewalks, and place a twenty mile an hour speed limit on, on those, as well as reinforce that our town code eighty, eighty-two ninety requires the use of helmets.
And that twenty miles per hour, that's in the town, in the state code as well as.
Yes.
Yeah, look that up here.
Help me understand how this works, Bo. If a kid has an electric scooter, where can he ride it? Can he be on the main, on the streets himself? Just not sidewalks?
Right.
Not greenway?
Might not be greenway.
I thought we banned them from greenways.
Um, okay, we have skateboards.
Okay, skate.
Skateboards, but we have nothing like scooters, which is the thing I've been hearing about, we need all of the birds, scooters, it's the C and M birds, I think you use.
Right.
A lot of people start the first, purchase that as a personal, so, and I have tried to see do it today, so.
They'll move pretty fast, too.
That's the tricky part of this, we're talking about a twenty mile per hour little thing that's right down the road, I mean, it's, it's gonna be some growing pains for everyone.
If I'm walking along, I don't want something.
Hate to come down our main street hill there, all of those.
And on the highway, it's the same.
Or motorized skateboard.
Oh, yeah.
Do these, they don't have to have any license of any sort, just wear a helmet, right?
Well, right now we don't have that, we don't have any helmet on, because with the scooters, you're doing bicycles, but right now we don't, but I like to do that, because they're riding, like, right with the traffic.
Right.
Stoplights every night.
Is a motorized scooter treated the same way, I mean, a motorized skateboard, does that have to meet all the criteria or the regulations of a skateboard? Or not?
I don't look at definitions, like, say it's a scooter, scooters.
Yeah.
It's.
It can have a stick or no stick, right? It can have handlebars or no handlebars, and some of the.
Like, the electric scooters are becoming more, even the, the trikes that people ride, we have two couples that are using them for transportation, you can, how about the, for the disabled?
Oh, oh, sure.
They're starting to increase, so, I'm just trying to add it, as people judge me because they bought a couple of the birds, and I'm sure we're gonna have to cross that bridge, too, and what people, right, what business is allowed to operate those, like, the business, like we're having over here, sorts of, pick up to drive, so, a lot of, a lot of, uh, Lord of yours, there's a bird, a lot of birds.
So, Bo, if, if it's legal to ride one of these on the highway, how about at nighttime? I mean, they don't have lights or anything.
Well, you have to have a light, just like a bicycle.
Okay.
You have to have a light, but.
Well, that's scary, I haven't heard of any accidents.
Bright lights or anything like that.
I haven't heard of people getting killed on these things yet, but I guess it's coming.
We had someone a few years ago, when was it, on the, Boomfield, right?
It was a record like a scooter.
Yeah. Because we used to not have to have, have helmets for those, and then we changed it.
All right, any other discussion? You want to, questions for Bo?
Well, I'll move that town council adopt the code amendment to chapter eighty-two dash eighty-nine, motorized scooters and motorized skateboards as presented to be effective upon adoption.
Second.
Daniel?
Mr. Crowe.
Yes.
Mr. Pennitt.
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, that passed. Mr. Burke, town hall meetings.
Yes, sir, last item is just a continuation of the discussion, trying to determine attendance as the council, if you like, to update the summer public meeting, all public meetings, and then, once we get that, we can start working on appropriate venue, or for that meeting, or what multiple meetings are.
Steve, I think they need to be indoors, I don't, I don't want to go to a town hall meeting where there's traffic noise and outside noise, I don't know, when it says Dean Park Shelter, I don't think that makes sense, just personally.
I don't know, Ron, I, I think they're more informal, outdoors, I mean, that's, that's just my opinion.
I'm worried about people being able to hear, people hearing each other speak, I don't know, is that, should that, is that not an issue in your mind?
It just depends, who knows how many people.
Just hope somebody comes.
Yeah, it depends how many come, yeah, I mean, if we have three or four people, that won't be an issue, we have thirty or forty, sure, but we just don't know our first time.
I'm not against having one, I think we should.
Oh, I do, too, yeah.
I think we all agree with that.
I think if you had it at the shelter and you had it, as, as long as you scheduled it when there's not games up there, I don't think it would be an issue, I mean, you're not gonna have traffic at the shelters at Rafton.
Okay, that makes sense.
And if there's no games, at most, you might have a few people in the playground.
Little league should be over if we do it, it's like, what, mid-July or August? Little league's probably over.
I feel like it runs all year long now, I don't know, there's always something going on at the park up there.
In the fall is when you get into the, the football.
Yeah, you know, I, I thought the, the plaza down here was the best location, I still do, I just think, I just think people would walk and drop by to talk with us, I, I just want to make it as informal as possible, I know there's an issue with weather, there'll be a thunderstorm or something, but.
I think the plaza's a better setup than.
That's not listed.
No.
I like that, too.
I mean, we just, we gotta try it, we don't know how many.
We can invite a boot truck to try and.
And wave defeat. For that night.
Throw some hot dogs up or something.
Plaza with pizza.
Hey, Moon's could cater.
There you go, yeah.
But again, I, I guess if, timeframe, if y'all are thinking summer or, or, or fall, if, if you can give us direction, then we can start really, if, if it's summer, then we'll start working earnestly on getting more details, but if it's fall, gives us more time to.
I think after Labor Day, I don't know, if I like it, yada.
It's gonna be more comfortable people if it's ninety degrees outside anyways. Well, I do, yeah, it is busy.
Thunderstorm risk is a little less.
Yeah, yeah.
And that gives us the direction we need, thank you.
But, uh, the mayor's gonna be the emcee, though, right?
Well, I don't, I, again, I, I wanted to make it as informal and as, as, as homey and folksy as we can. I, I, I don't think we ought to have it on Facebook, where we probably can't anyway, right? If we have it down there.
We could, but it complicates it.
I mean, do we have to for transparency, or, uh, and we'll just make a list of what we talked about, the quick people's questions?
Our place, couple of hugs.
And who's got a dog they can bring?
But it would be, I mean, it, it, we would have to meet the requirements for a public meeting.
Clerk meeting, and, and we would invite y'all to attend. We would have to develop minutes because it is a declared meeting.
Well, I'm hoping this is gonna bring up stuff that wouldn't come up otherwise. I mean, that's the whole purpose, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, that's another thing we have to decide, right? We're just gonna open it up, we're gonna do specific topics, or the first one, just open it up and see what we get?
Well, if we're doing it in fall, gives us a little more time for y'all to have that discussion.
All right.
Well, I think it's important that we just communicate that it is, in fact, um, a listening, that there will be no action taken, right, during these meetings. I think that we want to make sure we manage expectations as well with the public, so.
Manage the expectations.
Well, in fact, I'm there, I'm upset, and I want you to, you know, do something about.
I'm just sitting in all of this right here.
The log, the storm drain, or.
Well, you know, again, if we get one person, that's all that shows up, we could probably have a little dialogue. You know, why, why, but if we get a bunch of people, it just depends on how many we get, I mean, how, what we can.
Roving gangs might be out there.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, we just have to try it. I think it's a good time to try it, and see what, where it goes. Okay. Mr. Bodkins, you have anything? You have a food truck you wanna bring to the meeting? All right, uh, any council comments? Anybody have anything they wanna bring up? All right, nothing. Um, mayor's announcements, uh, we have a couple of things, uh, the Living Legacy, the, uh, film premiere, that's next, it's the twenty-third, Wednesday, yes. Has everybody RSVP'd, or do we need to do that as?
I haven't, but I did, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Well, I, I just did it, I just did it Friday, I mean, do, do we wanna do it as a whole, or is that, everybody's?
Yeah.
Well.
I think you need to do it.
I already, I didn't say, well, I picked up the ticket or whatever.
Oh, where do you do it?
Put my name on the list.
Well, you get this Eventbrite ticket thing.
Yeah, oh, really?
That's what I got, yeah.
Well, I didn't realize we had the RSVP, so I, uh, I didn't, and then Audrey sent me a message, wanted to know if I was coming, on the back of the.
You didn't send me one?
Well, I just, I'm sorry.
Well, they put me down as.
Yeah.
So, so we're just gonna hand out individually, everybody just?
On the back of the, on the back of the, um, notice that we got?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's the information, that number there, call that number, that gentleman will.
Andy.
Andy, yeah, he was very accommodating, he'll, he'll make sure you're signed up.
He sent me a ticket for Jeffrey Duffin, I remember.
Well, you're. That's already passed, Ron.
Okay.
There's one after that, what day is that again?
It's a Wednesday, it's five-thirty.
But what day of the month?
Uh, the twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
And how, how do we receive that information?
There was a, you should've gotten this in the mail, I.
I think you either got in the mail, I got something like that, yes, yeah.
Oh, yes, it's a marker protector.
See, if you do what I did, you didn't look on the back of it.
All right, so everybody's just handling that individually, RSVP, okay, all right. Uh, the twenty-fourth, there's a ribbon cutting, at, well, we'll be, we'll meet before then, Figaro's. I don't know, anybody wants to go to the new elect, electees conference, have y'all? Jason, you, Ligon, you?
I, I was gonna go down one day.
Okay, it was only one day? Stephanie, are you available for the new electees conference?
Well, I'll probably just, that's all day, yeah.
Did you get that information?
It's all day. We can go together, yeah. Yeah.
Remind me again, what's the date?
That was the, fourteen, fifteen, twelve?
It's the fifteenth of, of July.
And everyone's going?
Charlottesville.
Uh, only for the new, uh, council members, uh. No, uh, Jason, uh, yeah, Jason Ligon, actually, I have been before when I was newly elected, and it's very, very helpful.
Yes, I would be interested in going, and. You emailed about it. I need to respond. Um, I am available, it's fifteenth and sixteenth.
No, it's just one day, just the fifteenth.
Oh, yes.
Mary, can you respond for her? Okay, thank you.
I apologize, Mary, thank you.
Um, Jackie, have we set up, uh, ribbon cutting or dedication for Creekside Commons? At one point, that was gonna be late in June, wasn't it? Have we, have we pushed that back?
The last, you know, I told this for July the second.
Okay. You'll let us?
But I'm still kinda waiting, 'cause we're waiting on this final, I mean, excuse me, so I'm kinda waiting on Brian and Morgan a little bit with that. We got the, the, we keep the final stuff, thirty minutes. We'll be able to have a time and all of that, and we'll be sending out the invites, but as it is now, it's twenty minutes, July the second.
Okay, all right, all right. Um, we do have shirts, you know, so some of us are going to this, these conferences, I think it's probably, let's go ahead and get these things ordered. Uh, we have a selection of colors. So after the meeting, if you'll just kinda hang around a few minutes, look, look at the shirts, the colors, and, uh, give Danielle your sizes, so we can get everything ordered for, again, hopefully, we get them by July for when we're going to the VML thing. Not what happened for the October meeting. All right, anybody else? Oh, it's me, it, okay, all right, that's. All right, uh, anybody wanna recess?
Yeah, I wanna go to the bathroom.
Okay.
Jackie, you need a water? Need a water?
No, I'll find that.
Okay, I saw some in the bag.
So we are going into closed session, uh, and we'll have to ask you all to, you're certainly welcome to hang around. Okay.
That's a good idea.
Is this off, Steve?
Not yet, because we haven't.
Oh, Bill, Bill.
We have what?
We haven't got any.
Oh, I apologize. I had a question for both, it's, I can talk to him later. Oh, okay.
I like this, the room color.
Bo's not staying around, or he's just? I figured he would be.
Bo's night has the American flag and a big.
Oh, yeah. Boy, do some, like, pull-ups or something.
Joe noticed one, Ron posted his picture on Facebook, he still had his page honey supervisors tag on.
Yeah, how did I get that wrong?
Where were you at, Joey, we missed ya.
We were telling everybody if they had any questions or problems with solar, that Ron was, Ron was the one to talk to about it since he was on the board of supervisors.
I'm the John Ford.
Bryce, no, Bryce had his, uh, swimming, he had swimming lessons. And I was gonna miss, uh, three days last week, I was in Boston, so I'm like, I'm going to that.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all right, I paid for Elizabeth's ticket. Didn't even go, oh, well.
Hope you missed her, Joey.
Well, I guess she could've come, yeah.
Yeah, she could've.
She could've gone.
Or is it swimming at the Huxtable Pool?
Pretty good participation in that.
It is, yeah, I'd say they have, I don't know, between the three, they have three different age groups, uh, probably fifty kids doing it.
Oh, wow, great.
I'd say it's about a dozen or so for each group. Yeah. They have a lot of volunteers, everyone, all the parents apparently have to volunteer, too, which we kinda found out after the fact.
Is this allowed right now?
Doing some volunteering here a little bit.
Yeah.
We are still.
Great, they have that here, though.
Huh?
It's great that they offer that here. We had to go out of the county while my girls.
Let's get, he didn't know what we're doing, go ahead.
Uh, Mayor, uh, I'd like to move that the town council convene and go into closed session for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters regarding the provision of legal advice by such counsel as authorized by Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A eight of the Code of Virginia. The subject matter is potential liability associated with software used by the town.
Danielle?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Danielle?
Mr. Bicker?
Yes.
Ms. Willard?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I move the closed session be adjourned, and the Ray Town Council reconvene in open session.
Danielle?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Ms. Willard?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mayor, further move that with respect to the just completed closed session, and to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements on the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the town council.
Danielle?
Mayor Dolphner?
Yes.
Mr. Bickers? Yes.
Ms. Willard?
Yes.
Sowers?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
All right, before we adjourn, everybody look at the shirts, at least get a size. We gotta get this done. And pick out a color. If you don't pick out a color, thanks Danielle and Mary, now I'll pick out a color. Yeah, we'll pick one for you. All right. Anybody else? Meeting is adjourned.